There we go. Okay. All right, I'm gonna ask just the public real quick, just to make sure Marlene didn't come in as one of them. Also, if you are on or dialed in from a phone and wish to unmute, it's star six. To unmute yourself on a Zoom meeting, it is alt A from a computer if you're on a Windows computer. If you're on a Macintosh, hold on, I'll tell you, it is shift command A. So. All right, let me see if one of these public is Marlene. Yeah. Public seven nine one seven, are you a member of the public or are you a board or commissioner? All right.
Looks like you're muted.
Yeah, I asked them to mute star six if you you are on a phone line and muted. Public three zero eight one, are you a member of the public or are you commissioner? All right, well. I can check.
Mike, this is what you're earning the big bucks for nowadays.
That's right, let me just check my phone records, just to make sure that those don't match up because I hit the start and then not be done so. Now, this is Marlene right here, the seven nine one seven, I believe so. Marlene, if you can unmute yourself, it is star six to do so.
And Pam is still muted, I see.
I feel bad, I always do that to Pam, I'm sorry Pam.
He, he, Mike always does this to me every meeting.
It's not intentional either.
Forty-five minutes into it.
All right, are we ready to go?
Which one's Roger?
Yeah, Marlene's on, so.
Roger's there, correct?
There's two Rogers on my screen, I see.
Rogers?
See if we get Roger working correctly. All right, let's see if we can get him passed on you.
Bob, are you all done with your lights?
What's that?
Are you all done with your lights?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Little, little too close, Roger, with the mic.
What'd you do to Roger?
All right.
Roger's gonna need to mute one of those.
Sounds like a spaceship.
Dive, dive, dive.
I'm gonna mute you up. Um. I don't know if you wanna, you wanna call back via a phone line or if you wanna try again. Give it a second longer though. All right. Says, says you're unmuted right now, Roger, why don't you try saying something?
Mute.
Roger?
All right. Yeah, that seems to be working.
The host muted you. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Roger.
A little echo.
Little bit of an echo in there.
Hello?
Little loud yet. Are you sitting right next to your speaker by any chance?
Yeah.
Roger, did you hang, hang up or try back?
Something isn't right.
Yeah, Roger, can you, can you get away from the speaker a little bit, it's interfering with the microphone? Been a lot of feedback.
Maybe the portable speaker turned away.
Yeah, I did mute up his other one, but.
Can they hear you?
What's that? I don't know, I can't. I'm unmuted, I believe.
No, we can hear you.
Nope.
Start your video. I know, I guess, I. Start your video.
There he is.
There he is. All right, Roger, we're getting a little bit of a feedback.
Oh, there you go.
Is that, is that good, guys?
Roger's there.
Yeah, Roger's there. Roger, can you hear us?
There you are. You're the captain.
Hey, Roger, can you hear us?
Hello?
Roger. Can you hear us?
Yes. I can hear you now.
Okay. We're all set?
Please walk away, walk away, you're making too much noise.
Well, my goodness. Good as we're gonna get. All right. So. Are we all set, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. Welcome to the Manistee City Planning Commission Meeting of December 3rd, 2020. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
For which it stands.
And we are all attending from the city of Manistee, is that correct, Mike?
Yep.
For the Act number seventy-five, is that correct?
Yeah, Group Policy seventy-five to being.
Okay. Okay. Nancy, please take role.
Commissioner Solinsky?
Here.
Commissioner Semansky? Commissioner Roberto? Commissioner Roberto? Here. Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder?
Here.
Chair Whitlock?
Here, thank you. Approval agenda at this time, the county can't take action to approve the December 3rd, 2020 agenda. They're in motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Bob, second.
I'll second.
By Roger, any discussion?
I'm sorry, Roger, I didn't mean to get you like that.
That's okay, I'm used to it.
Okay, no discussion, Nancy, please take role.
Commissioner Solinsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlock?
Yes, thank you. Approval of minutes, this time the planning commission can't approve the number fifth, 2020 minutes. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? By Shelley, second by?
A second.
By Bob, any any comments or discussion? Sorry. Please take role.
Commissioner Solinsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlock?
Yes, thank you. Public hearings, we have one tonight. Public comment on agenda-related items. With being on Zoom now, you'll have to notify Mike. We need name and address and you have three minutes.
All right, guys, we're gonna work through this. You go one at a time and just, if you have a comment, say so, if you don't, please say pass. Roger, I'm gonna mute you up a little bit because your mic is giving us a little bit of feedback on it.
I understand.
I will unmute you. You know, during any comment.
At the end.
Okay, that works. All right. I'm gonna start with a I'm gonna ask.
Oh, a pass.
All right. Sir Howard, do you have a comment?
I'm, I'm actually here in support of the housing on River Street and Water.
Okay. Thank you. Tom Amor Senior?
Yes.
Do you have comment?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I can hear you, I'm.
Yeah, do you, do you have public comment or would you like the pass?
I'd just like to say that I was born in Manistee and I owned and operated that location on Water Street for forty years. And I think this development would be so good for that part of the city of Manistee.
And, and Tom, can I get you to say your, your, your address as well?
Twelve four nine three Hopkins Forest Drive, Bear Lake, Michigan, four nine six one four.
Thank you. Tom Amor?
Yes, I'm Tom H. Amor, also Tom Junior. And I live at four thirty-two Fourth Street, Manistee. I've worked for my dad out of that location for thirty years, but we've made a move. I'm in favor of this housing development and the, and the development across the street. Because housing for seniors opens up housing for workers also. In the last year, we've interviewed three different candidates that I've steered to realtors to go look. And apparently, it's hard finding work, so that is important. That is one of the first questions, you know, viable candidates wanna, wanna see. More housing close to downtown will help Manistee businesses. And obviously, if we can sell that property, it puts our business in a little better financial position. And that it will help maintain the fifteen jobs we have now. And our goal always is to grow, so now those are my comments.
You. Public three zero eight one, do you have comment? If, if you are on a phone, it is star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, Paul. Hi, pass.
Thank you.
Roger.
All right, Mark, that is everyone.
Okay, thank you. New business, Kendra Thompson, presentation of the where the heck is it?
We're referring.
Senior, senior housing development, I'm sorry, the livery and the dairy. Before you, before you present, Kendra, I just wanted, I wanna say something that when Rob was with, with planning and now Mike, that presentations like this should come before the planning commission first, rather than council. We, we do the grunt work and, and council approves these. So, please bring it to us if you have a future presentation. And I will address this with the city manager this week, so with that said, you have the floor.
Okay, yeah, Mark, our apologies. We, the scheduling of the city council work session meeting last week was, was, you know, coordinated through with the city. So, I'm glad that you're pointing that out to us, I'm not aware of that. And the city manager didn't direct us in that, so apologies galore.
Okay, I mean, it's not, it's, it's not your fault. But I just, you know, just wanted to let everybody know that, so.
Okay, so the purpose of tonight's meeting is just an information, no action, getting, getting you in the loop. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kitty Tynstra, let her introduce the project here, then she'll, I'll follow up with, you know, reviewing the designs a little bit with you, the concepts. So Kitty, you wanna lead the show? Mike, is Kitty unmuted?
Let me just check here. I will ask her to unmute again. There she goes.
Perfect, thank you so much, I appreciate that. Makes it a lot easier to give a presentation when you can hear me.
Yes.
So thank you, planning commission members, for taking the time to let us share with you tonight about the development that we are proposing for the city of Manistee. My name is Kitty Tynstra and I am the executive director with the Oceana County Housing Commission Nonprofit Corporation. And we, we provide development services for the West Michigan region. And primarily, we like to focus on more rural communities that tend to be underserved with development. So we are talking today with Kendra Thompson, who most, I think, all of you are probably familiar with. She is our architect on our development team. And Al Martin, who was mentioned earlier, he's our PowerPoint guru. He's also our development consultant. So he's been providing development services for over thirty years and is a tremendous wealth of knowledge. So we are we're proposing the river water development and it's actually got two different sites to the whole development. One, we are calling the livery, which is Tom Amor's property at four four three Water Street. The other site, we're calling the dairy, which is just across from Water Street on River Street at four fifty-one and four fifty-three River Street. We, we tend to call that the Jones Building because that's Dwayne Jones is the owner of that building currently. So, so what we are proposing will be senior housing on these sites. And some of you may be familiar with us since we came before you to discuss Monroe cottages. That was an application that we submitted for low-income housing tax credits this past year on the Saint Mary's Church site, where we had proposed duplex cottages for seniors. And unfortunately, we had one of the most competitive rounds in tax credits that we've had in many, many years. And our project was not funded that round. So with, with the opportunity to purchase the Amor property, it's gonna make our our application for tax credits much more competitive because it's a much better site in terms of what the tax credit process looks at. So we're go through several different reasons behind the why. But we're focusing on seniors, again, because Manistee really has a very significant senior population. We've got the majority of, of residents that are age fifty and older, that's actually the largest age cohort in Manistee. And that age cohort is forecasted to continue to grow through twenty twenty-three, or kind of the data that we've seen. And so with, with the senior housing population, what we've seen and what we've heard from a lot of community members, because we've, we've talked with many, many, many of them in this process, is that many of them are currently homeowners who are wanting to downsize. Their home is, is too much to maintain, to clean, they're ready to be done with yard work and snow removal. And so they're needing to relocate and downsize into something that's smaller and more affordable. But the challenge is, as one of the commissioners already mentioned, there's not a lot of housing options. The rental market has very little vacancies and there's also not very many homes for sale if they wanted to purchase something smaller. So, so there's a really high demand for housing for seniors, also for workforce, for everybody. And so there's kind of a ripple effect that happens if we are able to meet some of the housing needs of our senior population, that will free up homes for sale that will be able to serve a lot more of our workforce families that are ready to purchase. So, a lot of the seniors that we've talked to have really stressed that they want to stay in Manistee. This is their home, this is where they go to church, this is where they've worked for years, this is where their social supports, most of them, their families are. But the housing crisis has, has brought a lot of concern for them about where can they go when their homes become too much or where, when their living situation is too much. So we are, we're looking to meet that need. So with the city of Manistee's master plan, it does specifically mention several activities and goals related to senior housing. And so we believe that, that this development really fits well with what the intentions of the city of Manistee are currently. And as mentioned in the senior plan, consideration for senior housing within the city. So those tasks would be to maintain existing senior housing and support the expansion of assisted living options, as well as to set aside senior housing space that is utilized solely by seniors, since the needs of seniors differ from other age cohorts. So this, this will meet that. And within the residential portion of the master plan, it talks about the downtown district. And, and specifically that you have residential opportunities within the district. It helps improve the desirability of downtown. And so for a lot of traditional downtowns, the residential opportunities tend to be on the second floor, third floor space above the first floor commercial space. And we know that over the last ten years or so, there's been a lot of rehab for those units to create new housing. And there's still more opportunities for that to be done, there's some underused space in the downtown. So, so adding that mixture of residential with commercial use really helps create a district that encourages that walkability and, and that usage. And touching on this again, anytime that you have compatible retail service, entertainment and residential uses, it really lends itself to the viability, it lends itself to the desirability of businesses to locate to the downtown district as well as residents locating in and near the downtown district for that access to those amenities as well. So one of the, the great features of the development site that we're proposing is that the city of Manistee has four redevelopment-ready sites already outlined. One of which is the site that we're proposing. So it's already certified as redevelopment-ready by MEDC. And so by having one of those sites developed, it's gonna improve the marketability of the other sites as well. So again, that ripple effect, any, anytime you have investment, it spurs more investment. So our development team is the Oceana County Housing Commission Nonprofit Corporation, which is my organization, we are a nonprofit, as it says in the name. We've been providing development services for over twelve years. And we have just recently completed a senior housing development in Hart that we leased up this past summer, so we're very excited about that one. This project will be owned by the OCHC Manistee Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership. Kendra Thompson is our architect, she has worked with us on several different projects to date. Our senior housing project in Hart, Woodland Place Apartments that we did in Hart, and then our Shelby Trail project, which is currently underway in Shelby. The, the general contractor will be West Construction Services, which, one of the things that we really have prided ourselves on over the years as we've done development is, is while we need a general contractor who has the capacity to meet the mischta bonding requirements and things like that, we have worked really hard to ensure that we have local subcontractors involved as much as possible. And typically, we've been able to average about twenty-five percent of the project's costs have gone toward subcontractors, performing whatever, whatever construction services they're capable of performing from the local community, so that's been very wonderful. We will have an onsite property management company to make sure that everything runs smoothly, that it's a welcoming, friendly community. And that is Piper Management. And we're also partnering with the Manistee County Council on Aging, so Sarah Howard and her organization, as well as the Little River Band of Ottawa Indians. So we've worked quite a bit with Sarah, you know, especially as we've been wanting to, to receive feedback from the community on this project. Having those, those local folks providing a lot of input has been invaluable. So now I am going to turn it over to Kendra and she will get into the meat and potatoes of what we're actually proposing. And, and all the pretty pictures.
All right, thanks Kitty. So what's being proposed, again, we're here tonight to bring you in the loop for informational purposes. This project will be submitted to you under a special use permit process. And we're anticipating having those documents and that package in the planning department's office no later than January, or no later than December tenth, to be on your January meeting. Okay, so is Kitty, this is two, two properties, but one development. So it's under one ownership and therefore we're looking at this as, as a single permitting process. So on the, the Livery building, and we're naming it the Livery because historically that, that property was where all of the liveries were located along Water Street there. And then the building on River Street that, as Kitty said, we often refer to as the Jones Building. We're going to coin it the Dairy Building. As Ross Dairy was the most notable historic user of that building. There were a variety of, of businesses that were in that. Of different, different types and natures. But most of the community refers or recalls that being the Ross Dairy Building. So, so we'll be looking at this as a special use permit under one ownership. Even though it's multiple parcels. And, and the Livery Building, which you're seeing on your screen right now is a number of different parcels that collectively form this, this outline perimeter that you see. It's about one point three, one point four acres. And what we'll be doing is tearing down the existing building and then creating a new four-story building that will have forty-six one and two bedroom units. And so the building that you see on your screen now is the former Amor sign company building. We'll be tearing that down. Fortunately, and Al, maybe you could flip back to that last screen that, that there. The fortunate thing about the Livery property is that we do have the sliver on the left-hand side that provides access out to Pine Street. So it allows us to have a loop parking from Pine Street and, and then also coming and going from Water Street. So when I, when we get to the site plan, you'll see that a little more clearly. And then across the street, and this is how the building currently exists, the Jones Building of what we're going to, we'll be calling the Dairy Building. And that consists of four fifty-one and four fifty-three River Street. Four fifty-one, which is the building on the left side. It, when looking at it from River Street, is Manistee's oldest wood frame structure. That structure survives the Great Fire. So it does have some significant historic means to it. We will be pursuing the development rehab of these buildings, four fifty-one and four fifty-three River Street for historic tax credits. So we'll, we'll be working with the local Historic District Commission as well as the State Historic Preservation Office and then all the way up to the U S Department of Interior to capture those historic tax credits for that rehab project. The four fifty-three building, yeah, the four fifty-three building, which is the middle building. The one adjacent to the senior center. There's a masonry building, built a little bit later, eighteen eighties circa. And it's a masonry building. So again, I'm anticipating that we're going to do wonders to the, to the, both the River Street facade as well as the rear facade. The, a picture on the lower right is a rear facade where we have these single-story garage additions. And we'll be looking to take those off and, and develop a new secondary entrance off of Water Street. That will be much, much, much more tasteful than these old garage doors are. So.
An after slide coming up, I'm just not sure where it is.
Okay, that's okay. Can you flip it there? So this is the overall site plan. Now again, this is the architect's design concept site plan. The civil engineers are feverishly working on the site development package, again, that will be submitting to the planning office sometime next week, latter part of next week. But in concept, you can see that on the Amor property parcel, they indicated the ability to have entry access off of Pine Street on the left-hand side. And then being able to loop that around with parking and coming and going from Water Street. Then the footprint of the building is a four-story building of, again, we have one and two bedroom units in there. And you do have this, there you go. There you go. So the intent of the building is to develop it in a manner that is, I use the phrase cohesive and compatible with the historic district. This particular parcel is not in the historic district. But I, I wouldn't be doing my job for the community if we weren't very, very mindful of the, the relative proximity to the historic district, being cohesive and compatible. So the proportions, just some of the detailing, we'll keep it simple and put the detailing where it will be reflective of the, the massing and proportions of historic buildings. So you can see the, the first floor has much more of a, a baseline to it. Much like what our downtown buildings have, a higher floor-to-floor height. And then above that, keeping it relatively simple. Hoping to be able to use some of the brick similar to what we've used on the West Shore Community College project. That's been successful there. And so if we can incorporate that, I think we'll, in a cost-effective manner, be able to achieve that, that historic compatibility with the district. The balconies that you're seeing are not full balconies, they're what I'll call a Juliet balcony. So they're just a very simple projection out sixteen, eighteen inches from that living room space, basically. Allows patio doors to be opened and have some fresh air. You can see in the lower right-hand area of that rendering. We're anticipating bringing in some of the streetscape elements from the downtown district with the stone walls and the historic lighting fixtures. We'd like to introduce those at the entry into the parking area off of Water Street as well as Pine Street. And I hope that this would set a precedence for, you know, other developments that, that happen on the backstreet areas of, of, off of River Street as well, so that we continue that theme through. And the middle portion on the main floor, the rendering, you can see a couple of lights and a stone wall. Will have a little bit of a, a plaza area coming off of a small community room. So there's the back of, again, this is just a crude conceptual first pass at some thoughts on, this is the, the back, the south side of the Dairy Building. So you can see on the left-hand side is the four fifty-three building that has masonry. And the right-sided building is the historic wood frame building. And so we would anticipate having a wood lapped siding in that area. On the backside, I think we have a, there you go, you can see the difference, night and day. I think on the backside, tearing off those garages will be a huge improvement. And then we do have the ability to do something that's a little more non-historical, but certainly in keeping with what the U S Department of Interior, you know, requirements and expectations for historic rehab would be by creating this rear entrance deck. We do have some floors, finished floor to grade elevations that we have to make up. And so we'll be bringing in a barrier-free ramp and a couple of steps to get us up to that finished floor level. We'll have a separate entrance on the left-hand side, still underneath that canopy area. That would be for the three apartments that will be located upstairs. So this building will have three two-bedroom apartments to it.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Um, so are they currently two separate buildings that will be conjoined into one or they'll remain two separate buildings?
So they will be two separate buildings that will be blended into one. Their facade treatment will be different as the rendering indicates. You know, we'll want to maintain that, actually maintain, we'll need to recreate because it's been lost, most of it, the wood lap siding. As well as, you know, some of the, the continuation of the brick on the other. So they'll have from the exterior distinguishing, you know, distinguished facades. But this rear canopy deck area will bring them together as one. And then interior-wise, they become blended.
Actually, have already been combined into one legal property entity already.
That's correct. So on the, coming in off of River Street, they are, is one office space on the main floor. And in the upstairs have been vacant for my lifetime. They've had no use whatsoever.
I got a question on the four-story building.
Yep.
Have you guys looked into what may be any problems where the old laundry dry cleaners used to be on that site?
So part of the process will be the environmental review on this. And so we'll take it up the, take it down the chain as far as we have to. But we're aware of historical environmental concerns there. Some of those have been addressed and we'll be sorting out the remainder of those issues.
I have a question on the four-story building as well, there will be elevators in there?
There will be, maybe Al, let's go to the, there you go. Here's the floor plan for the four-story building. So the lower plan on the sheet, at the bottom of the sheet is the main level. So on the left-hand side, upper left-hand side, you come into the vestibule and the lobby space. You also can enter from the lower right, or lower left-hand corner, coming in off the parking lot as well. That takes you into the lobby space where we have an elevator and then a stairwell. And then there's a second stairwell at the right-hand side, the east end of the building.
Okay, thank you.
So on the main floor, we have one and two bedroom units. And the middle upper section where the cursor just was, is a small community room that goes out to that patio area. I pointed out when we were looking at the elevations. Otherwise, the main floor consists of six one-bedroom units and, no, I have that wrong. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four, five, six one-bedroom units and two, two-bedroom units. Do I have that correct? Or eight one-bedroom units and two, two-bedroom units. And then going upstairs, we have eight one-bedroom units and four two-bedroom units on floors two, three and four. Or, yeah, two, three and four.
On the south side, on the south side of that four-story building, you've got a sizable hill, that's, you're going to have good landscaping and what retaining walls and stuff like that.
Yeah, so, so you can see between the property line right there where that cursor is, that's conceptually a retaining wall. That we're anticipating having to construct. Now I will say that since we do have the survey work completed and topography and so forth. That the development is proposed, the retaining wall is not going to be as critical as what we initially thought. We're definitely going to have it. You know, when you're closer to First Street there at the end of the parking lot. And, and as it continues up. But right where the cursor is right now, when we go to the left a little bit, we probably don't need much of a retaining wall. Is, is what we would have anticipated. But yes, and I answered your question, Bob, we will have.
That is, you know, that looks at potential for a lot of water rundown otherwise in there.
There's, so you know, again, the civil engineering will address complete stormwater collection and, and you know, addressing stormwater on that. We will have retaining wells, but they're not going to be as sizable as my initial thoughts were a couple of months ago. And then what you have on your screen now is the floor plans, proposed floor plans for the Dairy. So at the bottom of the page is the main floor entrance. So when we remove the two garages, we'll look to create parking there. Along with this, this terrace that has the barrier-free ramp and stairs. At the west end of that deck area would be another set of stairs that would take the tenants, have them, they have direct access into more of a private lobby area and upstairs. The alleyway that exists between the Jones Building and headed east to the United Way Building is part of this property and part of this development. So we're looking to create a pocket park there and a walkable provide walkability for the residents of not just this building, but the building across the street, the Livery Building. So that gives that connectivity from the new four-story building direct to River Street. So.
And I think that the United Way folks will be happy to get their side entrance for stuff a little bit.
Hey Kendra. On the Dairy Building, my, well, my dad worked there, right, when he got out of the war, for a short time. Just throw that in. Will that have an elevator going to the upper, upper apartments?
At this time, no. Three apartments do not require a, an elevator. Now the building will be fully, both buildings will be fully fire suppressed. But three dwelling units on that second floor do not require an elevator. However, having said that, the plan for the upper level is the, the top plan on the sheet. And you can see the stairwell that, that comes up and then there's, you know, a common corridor area. And then entrance into the three two-bedroom apartment units. The foresight has been given to a potential development headed westward and how we could connect into additional upper level housing and.
So Kendra, there's only one stairway up to the upstairs on that one?
So three, three dwelling units requires just one stairwell. And then we have, out of all of the sleeping units have, have egress windows. So, so we're adding windows that do not exist right now on the east elevation. How we're able to accomplish getting two, two-bedroom units.
Walkway in between the buildings?
I'm sorry, the question?
The walkway in between?
Yes, that's a fourteen foot, correct, that's a fourteen-foot alleyway through there.
Is that going to be green space or what is?
Yes, so we're looking to do it as green space and some type of, you know, meandering pleasing walkway thoroughfare, thoroughfare that would, again, provide that connectivity from River Street to the buildings. Including the building across the street.
To the new pizza place.
To the new pizza place, direct.
Being only one stairwell, are those upstairs rooms going to have equipped with the escape ladders? Portable escape ladders that they can throw out the window?
Yeah, that's not required by Michigan Building Code currently. So we are, we have egress windows that are required out of the spaces. But for three dwelling units in a space, we, we will be fire suppressing the entire building. So we'll have a fire suppression system. And one stairwell is, is permitted. And you have examples of that on many other buildings downtown that have been developed in recent years. So, so all of these units and these buildings will be developed using Enterprise Green Energy Efficient Standards, so that will help the tenants on their operation. So that will help the tenants on their operational costs, their heating and electric costs. Um, you know, sometimes we'll do projects that are, you've probably heard the phrase LEED, LEED certified. Uh, we like to use enterprise green energy standards because they're a group that's a little easier to work with. The standards don't differ, it's just the process of getting it approved. Um, and all of these units, you know, will have modern kitchens. I think you could see from the designs that, you know, they're more kitchen island type of, of kitchen development. That's very desirable, um, you know, dishwasher disposal, refrigerator range. Um, these are HBCO, include air conditioning, uh, washers and dryers in each of the units. Uh, all of the units will be equipped with computer outlets, cable TV hookups all readily available. Um, community space and meeting room is how we will be using the main floor of the, um, of the, uh, the dairy building. So, so we'll have offices, support offices, community room, uh, meeting rooms. And then.
You talked about possibly putting some, eventually doing stuff to the west a little bit and where the current senior center is. Uh, if you did that, would those upstairs rooms be that they're there now, would those be ADA compatible?
They, all of these units are designed, all of the units in both the new four story building and this, uh, the dairy building are designed as being either ADA or ADA adaptable. So.
Kendra, I have a question, I've been kind of holding off here. Um, and since, since Bob jumped in, I think I will. Um, you had, uh, you're trying to get this on the January Planning Commission meeting, but have you spoken with the HTC about their approval or have you spoken with anybody on there?
We have not at this point. Um, uh, we have not, you know, this is going to go through the his, uh, state historic preservation office for historic tax credits. Uh, so, um, we're fully prepared to take it to the historic district commission. Um, but we were not planning on doing that at this time, uh, because that'll require a much higher level of detail.
Okay, I was just, just wondering, okay. Um, and, and once you do get that detail and you move forward, if you could send it to Mark before, uh, you know, you even send it to us or anything like that, then just kind of get his feelings on it. Um, after, you know, you go through that process before the meeting, so he can kind of, you know, approve of it as well. I think that would help streamline that process a little bit.
And I wouldn't anticipate that happening until we are successful in the tax credits being approved.
Understandable.
Can I ask a question? Was plans ever to take the United Way building in with this group of buildings?
Uh, so these plans do not include the United Way building at all. No, that doesn't mean that down the road, there may not, you know, there may lend itself to having a, a continuation of development, let's say, but that would definitely be a different project.
Okay.
So, so, um, you know, I, I, I wear a couple of hats here. Obviously, I, I serve my client, but I serve my community most importantly. And I think this is just an ideal fit for this Amor property. It's a, what I would consider it an outlot to our historic downtown district. And there's nothing better that can serve our downtown historic district than housing. Uh, so, um, what was a historically more industrial type of site on an outlot backstreet location to our, our wonderful downtown historic district is, I think this is just the absolute right solution to this property um, with the Amor property. And then obviously the, the dairy building, the Jones property, um, we've all been wanting to get it in a rehabbed fashion for a number of years. And this project will allow us to do that.
And we're also excited about the possibility of spurring more development of the cottages across the street on Pine Street. Um, there's a development that seems to have stalled out a little and hopefully with the new, uh, units here, that'll help spur more units on that site again as well.
And I, and I think it's important to note on the Monroe Cottage project over at the Wagner Center, um, that's not a, a given up project at all. It's just that the timing was not right with the states and their funding process. So that project will happen, we just don't know when. So your, your support of this project is, you know, obviously critical. Tax credit applications go in in February, so we'll be, we'll be hoping to have positive response from you in January. Uh, if there's anything that is of concern to you, uh, I, I would welcome hearing that sooner than later. So if there's any questions or concerns or areas where, you know, you, you have some questions, please ask me.
Oh, it's a development that's needed in my eyes for the community. It's certainly a plus for development for Manistee, taking care of some properties that are in dire need of, uh, building. Um, wish you the best and, and, uh, and, and pulling this off, so.
I, I agree with Mark, I think, I think it's a, the, the development is a good idea. I question whether it should just be for senior housing though. I, I can see where this would fit in more with workforce housing much better than senior housing.
So senior housing and the ability to fund the senior housing, um, it may be an easier path.
I, I understand that it's an easy, yeah, I understand it's an easier path. I just think that we need more of the workforce housing right now.
Um, and as Kitty, and as Kitty was, you know, trying to explain that the ability to take those seniors out of homes that they currently reside in and into a, you know, a building like this. And then that frees up tho- those real estate, um, those homes on the market.
Yes, it, for people who are able to buy, but for people who are not able to buy, they still need rental properties.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I, and I absolutely understand where you're coming from Pamela, because it is, it's, it's a huge need. Um, you know.
I'm a Realtor, so I know.
Yeah, I'm sure you're getting the calls every single day of people that are looking for rental units, I'm sure.
And, and multiple times a day and there's no thanks.
Yes, and, and one of the things that I would like to say is, um, you know, we're not a developer that's coming from Chicago wanting to throw up housing and, and leave the community. We have long-term plans. We've actually talked quite a bit about, um, the potential of doing a workforce housing development um, adjacent to the downtown district as well. Um, and actually, we've thought if, if we can get, um, this initial senior housing done, we have plans for a phase two that could potentially be done with the senior center as well as the Kowalski site right next to the Amor building. Um, that, that we've spoken with both of those entities. They are potentially willing, um, to consider that project. And so the hope would be that we could turn those sites into workforce housing as well. So as a phase two, um, and we would marry them together so that, like Kendra had said before, it's cohesive and compatible. Um, so that they, that they share a lot of common characteristics. Um, and, and we can add that workforce piece into it. Um, so, so I definitely hear you because, and honestly, you know, my, our organization has done a lot of service work as well and with renter populations, especially renters and, and housing crisis. And so I feel very deeply of how strong that need is when folks are looking for that housing. Um, and so we, we have intentions and plans of, um, being involved in Manistee, hopefully for many years to come with more and more developments. As Kendra had mentioned, Monroe cottages, hopefully we can get this senior housing development done and then we can work on a phase two for workforce. Um, so we're not, we're not done yet. We have lots of ideas and lots of plans, but first step is, is this project.
Right, and, and just to, you know, echo what Kitty's saying, there is a trickle down effect with, with housing. And, and this is a much needed senior project that I think we can all agree that we need senior housing.
Um, we, we do, and I'm, I'm a full supporter. I love the Monroe project that, that you guys had. I, I love that idea and I'm sorry that there was a problem with it because I thought that was just the best of both worlds.
I will say that, um, you, you know, we've, we still need to emphasize that there's, there's other things that are happening besides, uh, um, you know, lack of housing that are also adding to our, our, our lack of housing issues that, that we're all well aware of. We worked on it for eight months, a year. Um, and nothing's been done on it yet, nothing's been passed. So, um, I, I do welcome, you know, housing that we can get and it trickles down. And I think it will open up other housings, but we, we do have to have something in place so those houses that do open up, then don't become short-term rentals.
And, and that's a concern of mine, you know?
And let's not lose sight of the Washington School project. And it's going to in some, you know, some way, uh, fill some of those needs, uh, for workforce housing. And so we're trying to tackle so many things. Um, and so we're taking step here and step there and Kitty's spot on. I, I, I think you could probably read between the lines when you asked about the elevator at the dairy building. It's all planned out, folks. It's all planned out.
Cause I can't seem to hear it's going up four stories, four stories.
Yeah, it's all planned out.
I'd like to add to that, as a member of the board of the senior center, we get a lot of requests from seniors who are looking for senior housing that doesn't require a lot of upkeep, both inside and outside. And, uh, I think this is the perfect location because it's easy access to walkable downtown. And I think freeing up their homes, they could become a rental home, not just, you know, just not a family dwelling, but, but could be on the market for also once it's purchased to be a rental home. So that would add to the, uh, uh, problem of housing too.
Yes, and, and thank you for that comment. We've actually, um, been maintaining an interest list, um, from contacts primarily supplied by, um, the Manistee County Council on Aging. Um, and we currently have about 65 names of seniors that have reached out um, just from the very limited information that was provided on the Monroe cottages project. Um, and still then with, um, some of the, the conversations that have gone out into the community a little bit, um, on this project as well. So from virtually no marketing, we've already got 65 seniors or so, um, that, that have expressed interest in this housing, which is definitely goes to illustrate some of the need as well.
If, uh, if everything goes through and everything is perfect, when, when could you foresee starting this project?
I would.
Oh, go ahead, Kendra.
I would anticipate the actual shovel in the ground would be spring of, uh, '22. So tax credit apps, uh, are submitted in February, you know, announced early summer. Uh, there's some, you know, number of logistics to happen, um, including a pretty, pretty large set of construction drawings uh, that get developed. And so it, it's gonna warrant going into spring of the next year to be able to, to dig for foundations. And, uh, this is definitely a 12-month construction process. So we may split that off into, you know, the dairy and the livery, um, separate. Um, you know, one may, one may be the focus ahead of the other. I'm not quite sure, we haven't really discussed that. But reality is that construction would probably commence spring of '22.
The, uh, the livery, I'm excited for, but I'm excited for the, the dairy to be, uh, reconfigured and refaced. Um, that building has needed something for many, many, many years. And that's, that's the exciting one for me, to bring you back to its former grandeur.
Good. Well, thank you, um, and I look forward to talking to you more, um, in January, so.
All right. Does anyone have any other questions for Kendra or Kitty?
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation. It was very informative and we wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, moving on, Mike, to old business. We have several non-motorized trail plan sign, sign ordinance, excuse me, memo to council, amendment to the zoning ordinance, amendments to zoning ordinance and, uh, public hearing set, set dates, so.
Okay, um, let's start with the non-motorized trail plan. Um, so as you guys know, our countywide recreation trail plan is expiring December 31st, uh, 2020. Uh, we've been in talks with Eagle about an extension. Um, they've responded back to us saying that at this time, they're, they're not gonna extend our countywide recreation trail plan. Um, uh, we are still pursuing other avenues to request that extension. Um, but with that said, there are other grants that can be, um, that other avenues that we can go to get grants, including the Eagle Pass for Recreation Program um, and a couple others that they only require a capital improvement plan, which the city has. So, uh, we could go down that avenue if we choose to. The non-motorized trail plan, uh, could still look to be adopted. Um, and with that, we could look to, uh, um, move forward with, with writing potential uh, trail plans for the city and around the Manistee Lake region as long as we move forward with the other communities also adopting the plan that are actually listed in the plan. Um, with that being said, it's a little difficult right now, obviously with COVID, to hold the needed, um, meetings for that. Uh, not all communities have the facilities, uh, that are available to the city or, or some of the other ones. Um, so we're kind of, we're still kind of in a holding pattern on adoption of that plan. Um, but, you know, it is something that we can look forward to in the future, maybe, um, early next year, getting it adopted and then potentially building some trails or looking to expand some trails around the region. Um, really, uh, there's a lot of moving pieces in it that still need to be figured out. Um, you know, especially with, uh, some of the, the, the trail committees that have been set up as well as the, uh, um, other entities that are looking to get involved into it. So, uh, I'm still trying to work through a lot of that, uh, make some of those contacts that are gonna be needed. Um, there was a lot of moving pieces in it when Rob stepped away that hadn't been figured out yet. And, um, luckily, I'm still in contact with him, but COVID has made it really difficult to move forward with this plan. Um, so, you know, that said, that's kind of where we're at with it.
Yeah, good, Mike?
Um, the sign ordinance, uh, you guys had a memo in your packet, much like we had sent out to city council uh, regarding, uh, the, um, short-term rental ordinance. We were looking for guidance from them on it. Uh, I don't know if you, if everybody attended when I presented our recommendations of, uh, city council, but, um, it, I was glad I had that in my back pocket, uh, as far as like, hey, they had recommended it, um, that we move forward with it and without some kind of, without some kind of direction from them or, you know, what they would like to see or purpose. It's, uh, it's difficult for us to invest the kind of time that it's gonna be required to rewrite the sign ordinance um, without, you know, some kind of direction from them, what they would like to see. I'd hate to work all the way through it for over a year and then them not adopt it. So we reached out to city council, um, to see if they would like to, you know, uh, for us to move forward with that. Um, and we're gonna be, you know, not really presenting anything, but just asking them, you know, what they think at a, um, upcoming. I believe it's a city, um, work session. I, I'd have to look again, I don't remember off the top of my head, but we will be, um, just discussing it with them.
Yeah.
Um, so we have the amendments that we've had for quite a while, some are. So we have the amendments that we've had for quite a while. Some are a requirement of the RRC program or the ready redevelopment community. And one of those being the site plan review committee had to be amended to include a couple other names within our zoning ordinance to keep our to keep us up to date on that. And we're working through like a lot of the updates as far as the annual review of like sites that we're looking to develop those such, those like, those type of things. And, you know, we really kind of need to get that adopted. With, you know, I, I was unable to watch the governor's message today. I don't know if we were extended. But, you know, if
Not yet.
Okay, if we haven't been extended or in with December coming up, the eighth coming up quickly. If we are extended, we will probably try to hold if we're able to the Zoom meeting, a public hearing via Zoom. I'm going to get these, these passed as well as anything else that might be coming down the, the line here shortly, including Kendra's presentation if it's turned in and approved on time. So we might be holding that over a Zoom meeting, which I know is not ideal, but it, you know, it is the time we live in, so. And that's kind of where we're at with that, so.
Next, master list. C-three lower story dwellings, patio, site plan review committee, temporary storage and design standards.
Yeah, those are all part of the amendment list that we've, we've been going through. We've had them there for quite a while. That's the amendments to the lower story C-three area that allows for residential on the bottom floors as well as the you know, the first forty percent we discussed, I think, two months ago. Maybe three, and they're kind of blending together for me, the fences. The patio is not requiring a land use permit if they're, they, you know, three feet off the, the property line and they are not above grade. Site plan review committee, we discussed temporary storage structures, letting those, those kind of cubes come in, but that's another thing we, you know, I'm going to reach out to. And I'm just reminding people that canvases, those, those tent things that are temporary storage structures by almost definition. Carports, they're not allowable. They're starting to spring up again because of the winter, the snow. I imagine I'm going to be writing letters, just, you know, telling people, hey, these aren't allowable. You need to remove them. And probably talking to Chief Glass, you know, if he sees them, let me know. And then the design standards that we came up with in, I believe, October with Rob. Trying to implement some of those. So there's, there's quite a bit on there. For the amendments that, you know, we have to do via Zoom. And if, you know, the public came out, I, I realized, again, it's not ideal, but you know, we might be forced into it just because we, we've been sitting on some of these for over six months, so.
All right, thank you, Mike. Public comments, communication? There's anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment? Name an address, please, and you have three minutes.
All right, Aaron, you're up first.
No comment. Thank you.
H A more?
No comment. Thanks.
Public three zero eight one. If you are on a phone, it is star six, you.
I don't have a bypass.
Thanks, Roger.
And Kendra, do you have a comment?
Nope, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, Mark, that is everyone.
All right, thank you. Correspondents?
All right, you guys have in your packet correspondence I received. It's called as Great Lakes Pummel, Michigan Beach Town Rush to Set Development Rules. This was requested by the community foundation for me to put out to our communities with Lake Shore. It's just for you to read through for informational purposes. There's no action or anything that needs to be taken place. It was just put out as a courtesy for your guys', you know, to gain some knowledge on it, so.
Staff reports?
At this time, I, I do not have anything.
All right, thank you. Nancy, you have anything? Nothing, okay. Member discussion, anybody? Start with Bob.
I got nothing.
Okay, Marlene?
Yeah, I'm really excited to see all this activity starting to happen. Our downtown area has been so stagnant and now with the east and west end, a lot of things going on. I'm hoping that'll make the rest of the downtown perk up too.
I think we all agree on that one, Marlene. Roger?
Hello.
You have anything?
Nothing to say. Fine day. Thank you and goodbye.
Thanks, Roger. Shelley?
No, I agree with Marlene. It's, it's pretty exciting to, to start seeing some actual development and hearing developers come into town from other places, excited about bringing opportunities here, so. It's, I'm excited about what could be coming over the next few years.
Great, thank you. Pam?
Yeah, I agree. I'm excited too. I'd like to have some, the city council kind of get a little bit of fire lit under him for that short-term rental thing. But not sure how we can get that to go on anymore since we turned it over to them, but yeah, it, it's great to see things happening around town.
Agreed. The only thing I have is, this one's for Mike. Several meetings ago, the new owner of the, was the defunct gas station on Fifth Street wanted to move forward with a car repair facility. Has anything happened with that yet, Mike?
We've gotten nothing from the applicant. We turned over the, the required forms. You know, what was going to be required of them. And since we've done that, we haven't heard anything. I mean, I, with the with an auto repair facility, you know, there's, you know, you guys told him you'd support it, but there is a a beginning for the site plan and then, you know, there's a little bit of fees upfront that you have to come up with before you can implement it. And maybe he's still gathering his fees to get the other to, to implement, but we haven't received anything and I haven't had any follow-up phone calls with him.
I know we asked that he take a walk, walkabout to the neighbors and tell them what he's, what, what he is about. So let's see, because right now he has about seven vehicles on that property.
I saw a roll-off dumpster in there for a while.
Yep, he had a dumpster and there was, looked like he cleaned out the place, but now there are, like I said, about seven vehicles there. Kind of looking like it was.
I know, I know that he had did talk with several people there. And the person he bought the building from has that old hotel up on thirty-one by Taco Bell. And he finally came and got a lot of his vehicles. And the dumpster, he got rid of a lot of debris that was left inside, but I know he is working on a site plan. And he is still wanting to go forward with it.
Okay, yeah, like I said, the site plan is, is a very, it, it, it can get very expensive, so. Especially for a special use permit. So I mean, it's not surprising to me that that's what the holdup is. I kind of anticipated that when we sent it over there. Hopefully he's able to move forward with it because I think it is, it is needed and I think it would be a benefit.
No, definitely. You have to clean up, clean up that site and make it one like it once was, so. Other than that, I don't have anything. I just thank the commissioners and the audience and staff for tonight. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Need one, need a motion though, Marlene, just before you second.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, second?
Looks like Roger's got his hand up.
Yeah, Roger's trying to second it.
With that, have a good evening, everyone.
You guys have a good evening.
Thank you, you guys too.